Good evening and welcome to the meeting of the Malden School Committee. Today is Monday, April 9th, and today we make history. I'm being told that the school committee meetings are now being streamed live at where else but www.matv.org. So we want to thank them for partnering with us to bring this information to as many residents as possible. So if you go to matv.org and the city stream link will take you to the Malden School Committee meeting. The next meeting will take place on Monday, May 7th, and that will be at 7:00 PM. And then, of course, we always ask, please place your phones on vibrate and keep your conversations to a minimum during tonight's meeting. So with that being said, I'd ask everyone to please rise and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence for members of our armed forces who have lost their life and continue to protect our country. Clerk will call the roll.
Mayor Christensen?
Here.
Ms. Cabral?
Here.
Mr. Casucci?
Here.
Ms. Di Maria?
Here.
Mr. Sett?
Here.
Mr. Foyle?
Here.
Mr. Iavino?
Here.
Mr. Weldon?
Here.
Assistant Superintendent Casabian?
Here.
Student Representative Mallory McDonald?
Okay, sufficient quorum to conduct business. We'll now move on to the first order of business, but before we do, I think I want to join all my colleagues in welcoming back Nancy Casabian. Very nice to see you. We missed you. Welcome. The first order of business is the approval of the minutes, and they're from March 5th. So we have a motion by Mr. Iavino. We have a second by Ms. Di Maria. Any questions on the minutes that were provided to you last week? Chair hears none. All those in favor say aye. Anybody here opposed? The ayes have it. The minutes are approved. Next order of business, public comment. If anybody wishes to address the school committee, now is the time to do so. Please state your name and address. Going once, going twice. Okay, we'll close that portion of the meeting. If there be no objection, we would like to take out of order, under consent agenda, item one, the approval of the appointment of the Assistant Superintendent. Does the chair hear any objection? Chair hears none. Superintendent DeRusi.
Thank you. I would also like to give a very heartfelt welcome back to Ms. Casabian. It's good to see her back in the office, giving me a couple of hours every week to help me stay focused. It was difficult in her absence to hold it all together, but I'm feeling better now that she's back. We met today. Of course, she came back to discuss budget. She's like, I might go home and take a nap now and come back, but that's okay. I felt like one also. But welcome back, Nancy. All right, that being said and moving on, I would like to take the opportunity to present Dr. Kelly Chase to the school committee to assume the role of Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, and I'm presenting her for their approval. Kelly will be replacing Ms. Casabian, who announced her retirement early this year, and our goal was to bring a new Assistant Superintendent onboard so that that person could work, gain some wisdom from the outgoing Assistant Superintendent, and transition in so that we would hit the ground running July 1st. A little bit about Kelly Chase, she has a very strong track record in public education. She's worked in several urban districts. A very good friend of mine who heard of this appointment, who works in Everett, said we should have never let her go. So that's a good sign when you have a neighboring community telling you that. She's worked her way up through the ranks as an English teacher, an assistant principal, director of English, and an Assistant Superintendent for three years. A screening committee was comprised of two directors, two principals, the union president, and a school committee member. They paper screened seventeen applicants and put four candidates forward for interviews. Dr. Chase was ranked high on the list of the finalists. It's my hope at this time that the school committee will approve Dr. Chase for the role of Assistant Superintendent pending contract negotiations. Ms. Chase is prepared to start work on May 14th so she can transition into the district with support of Ms. Casabian.
All right, thank you, Superintendent DeRusi. I guess the next order of business, do we want to have her up to say a few words and then take questions?
That would be fine.
Okay.
This doesn't work, I'll use my teacher voice. Thank you. It is such a pleasure to be here this evening. Thank you to Chair Mayor Christensen, Vice Chair Adam Weldon, and the entire school committee who have gone out of their way to make me feel comfortable and welcomed in a district that will soon become my new home away from home. I appreciate the opportunity to work in this community, one, that in the short time I've been here is steeped in tradition and pride and dedicated to always moving its schools forward. This is a challenging time for schools with tight budgets and many new mandates coming at us, but also a time that is very exciting and presents a great opportunity to work collaboratively with teachers, administrators, and staff. I'm thrilled to be here, and I look forward to rolling up my sleeves in the coming weeks, making a smooth transition with Nancy Casabian's help, and getting to work. So thank you for the chance to be part of this team. I really sincerely appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. If there be no objection, I think we first hear from Mr. Iavino, who served on the search committee, I believe.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would heartily put forward the name of Dr. Kelly Chase as a replacement for Mrs. Nancy Casabian to become our new Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction and Assessment. I had the pleasure of sitting in on those interviews. I found her to be open, very candid, very well-versed, answered all questions, no hesitation. She looks very young, but believe me, she belies that look. That look belies a tremendous strength of knowledge and breadth of knowledge of the schools and education, so I am very happy to put her name forward as a recommendation to become our new Assistant Superintendent.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Iavino. All right, next up, let's hear from the members. Are there any questions from the rest of the membership? Mr. Winslow.
Is there a proposed contract length at this point of time and any of that kind of detail at this point?
Superintendent DeRusi.
At this time, pending the approval of the position, then we would talk to setting up a subcommittee to work the contract. Hopefully, next week would be an ideal time during the school vacation. Dr. Chase has said she'd be in for two days over the vacation to meet with me, Nancy, to kind of lay some groundwork, so I know Wednesday and Thursday she will be in district with me.
Mr. Winslow, you still have the floor?
That's my own.
Okay. Mr. Weldon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First and foremost, thank you to both Mr. Iavino and to the union president, Margaret Gonzalez, for sitting on that committee and the work that they did, and they came out with a great candidate. I'm very excited at the opportunity of having Dr. Chase in our district. Before I vote to support the confirmation, I do just want to take a second to look towards the future with Dr. DeRusi, because in our district, and we've discussed this many times with our previous superintendent as well, you know, we as a district, at least I believe, need to focus much more on leadership development and opportunities for our employees to advance from within the system. Over the past few years, it seems that our hiring rate for administrative positions from assistant principals on up has been dangerously skewed towards outside candidates, which, well, which we've talked about before. Dr. DeRusi is a big leadership development guy, so I look forward to seeing what he can do with and for the Malden Public Schools staff. This particular position was a difficult one for me, only because of the enormous amount of talent that we have within our district, especially from our curriculum directors. As a school committee member, I've been fortunate enough to work with and view a lot of these directors and what they do throughout the bullying prevention process. Manjula Karmchetti worked very diligently. Judy Allen, we've seen really bring our history department into the 21st century at 21st century speed. Margaret Adams, who engages our community and our parents in many more ways than I think we could have imagined, and all the other directors who do do great work. And it's a great thing because Dr. Chase is being welcomed into a great situation with a very dynamic leader at the top and a great curriculum and administrative team. So a year ago, I put my faith in Dr. DeRusi, and he's done nothing but exceed my personal expectations, and I think he's earned the right to say, just trust me on this one. So this position's especially important to Dave because this person is going to be his right-hand woman, someone who he can lean on, someone he can work with, and someone he needs to be able to trust. So although I do hope and press the superintendent to increase our efforts to hire from within throughout his tenure, I applaud and look forward to working with Dr. Chase. She has a very impressive background, and her enthusiasm for coming to our district is evident. So, you know, Nancy Casabian is a truly remarkable individual and a very talented Assistant Superintendent, and no one will be able to fully fill her shoes, but I am proud today to support Dr. Kelly Chase to succeed her as our next Assistant Superintendent. So thank you for the indulgence, and thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, other questions, comments, Mr. Foyle.
Thank you, Mrs. Chairman. I'd just like to welcome Dr. Chase to Malden, and it's going to be tough to follow in the footsteps of Nancy, but good luck.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Foyle. Anybody else? Okay, seeing no other lights, we have a motion by Mr. Iavino to approve.
To approve. Motion to approve.
Second by Mr. Casucci. Any last-minute discussion? Okay, hearing none, we'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Cabral?
Yes.
Mr. Casucci?
Yes.
Ms. Di Maria?
Yes.
Mr. Sett?
Yes.
Mr. Foyle?
Yes.
Mr. Iavino?
Yes.
Mr. Weldon?
Yes.
Mr. Winslow?
Yes.
Mayor Christensen?
Yes.
Okay. You hereby been approved. Congratulations and welcome. All right, the next order of business, if there be no objection, once again, superintendent has requested that we take out of order item number 3.2, which is the Malden High School Program of Studies. Does the chair hear objection?
No.
Chair hears none. Superintendent DeRusi.
At this time, as it is customary that the high school principal presents his program of studies, I will turn the floor over to Principal Mr. Dana Brown.
Okay, Principal Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Superintendent, Assistant Superintendent, welcome back and members of the committee. What you have before you is the draft proposal for this year's program of studies. We do like to answer as many questions as we can about anything we offer at Malden High School, any suggestions. I've already talked to committee member Dusset. There's a couple of typos there, and before we put it up on our white website for permanency for everyone in the district to see, other communities to take a look at, we want to make sure that we're going in the right direction. I will say that over the last couple of years, we've really taken stock in the type of students coming to Malden High School and where they are and where they're headed. And so, along with folks like Mr. Foyle, Mr. Iavino, we've renewed our commitment to things like tech ed, specifically auto shop and woodworking. Through the renovation, we've added a medical assisting room, and we've contracted with Medical Professional Institute. We're about to start that program. We've also brought on a new pre-engineering program. So we're mindful of the fact that not every student is going to college, nor do we believe every student should go to college, but we believe they should be college and career-ready, so we're trying to introduce as many skills as we can to our students. And that's one particular area where we're focused on. Another one, which is a focus of mine for the last several years, are the arts, and quite frankly, I don't want to work in a school or in a district that forgets about its art programs, and Malden has been very strong in that area and continues to be strong. At Malden High School, between music and drama and chorus, band, fine arts, we continue to reach kids who sometimes don't find thrill and drama in history class or maybe phys ed, but can find their strength in other areas. So I think what you see here before you is really a comprehensive look at today's students, and at this time, I would love to answer as many questions as I can, and if I don't know the answer, I certainly will go back and get that answer for you.
Questions of the membership. First up, Mr. Weldon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Brown. Just one or two, hopefully, quick and easy ones.
Sure.
When reading through this, do you think you might be able to just do a quick overview of some of the changes, especially course changes, that we've seen between last year's and this year's, and then if, or what, if any, sort of budgetary implications that might have on 2013?
From last year to this year, last school year, or the current school year we're in, which is last year's program of studies, to next year, there are very, very, very few course changes. There are some minor description changes, but I reached out to all of the directors early in the school year and talked about, we need sort of a consistent year next year. We've gone through the NIASC process this year. Our self-study is next September. We have not spent a lot of time this year developing new programs, developing new courses, developing new curricula. What we've really tried to focus on is getting ready for the NIASC study, transitioning to the Common Core. We have all sorts of DESE requirements that have occurred this year, so this was not the year to bring on new courses and new programs for next year, and so this program of studies reflects it. In fact, if you went through there, I'm not sure if there's any new courses. There are some minor descriptive changes, but nothing I would say is new.
Well, it definitely speaks to the fact that the high school, you know, under your leadership, the high school is doing a lot more with a lot less every year.
Appreciate that.
The only other question I had was on, I believe it's page six. For me, it's page six and page seven, but the schedule changes, promotion criteria, and taking outside courses for credit. There's a section that talks about the students' scheduling in terms of their ability to drop, add up, move up, and drop down.
Correct.
Is that something that's been, that's new this year? I didn't know if this was a Mr. Brown effort, if this was a guidance effort, but it seems like it's much easier for a student to move up than it is to drop down, and I didn't know if that was intentionally.
That has been in place probably now about four or five years, and one of the things that we try to do, and we're going through the process now and will continue till the end of the school year, it's a difficult balance between challenging students and not overwhelming students, and you need that balance. What we don't want to see happen is a student go through Malden High School for four years and never take difficult courses for fear of getting a C or a D, because then they never stretch themselves. And in fact, and I know some parents don't want to hear this, Cs and Ds aren't always a bad thing, particularly if you've challenged yourself with an advanced placement course or five honors courses, and you're doing hours and hours of work, and you're also involved in a sport or a club or an activity. We don't want students getting all As and Bs at Malden High School in courses where they don't challenge themselves. Doesn't help the student in the long run, doesn't help the school. So while we want students to excel and be able to go up, we really make sure they take a hard look at dropping levels when they're already in a course, because that doesn't look, it doesn't look good on a high school transcript if students are continuously, over a four-year career, dropping from honors to CP or advanced placement to honors. I always use the example of George Chi, who's at Princeton now. His senior at Malden High School, he took a balanced schedule of AP courses, honors courses, and CP courses, and he finished number one in the class and went to Princeton. So I think it's that idea of challenge yourself, but have some balance. Don't coach through high school with all lower-level courses just to get all As and Bs, because it doesn't help the school or the student.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Brown, and thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Weldon. Ms. Dusset, and then we're going to go to Mr. Iavino.
Good evening, Mr. Brown.
Good evening.
First of all, congratulations on your success at Malden High. It's true measure of your dedication and commitment. Now, I did read this, and bear with me, I have a few questions for you.
Sure thing.
Okay. How large are the class sizes at Malden High? Do you, what would you try to cap them off at?
In the computer, depending on the course, we have caps that run from 12 to 30. A 12 would be for a special education course that's mandated by law not to go over a certain number, and we might have a teacher and a paraprofessional in a class of 12. In our tech ed classes, although it's not in the contract, we've tried to keep the classes between 20 and 24, because students are using machinery, tools, and sometimes you don't want 32 kids in the auto shop with all of that equipment around. So we've tried that. In some of our academic classes, we could have anywhere from 15 or 16 students up to 31, 32, 33 students, depending on the demand for the class. And in some of our classes, we only have one person teaching one section of a particular subject. So for instance, we have AP Physics. We have one section of AP Physics or two sections, and 64 students sign up for AP Physics. We have 32 and 32. Or if we have Latin, and sometimes Latin 1 gets really big, and we only have one Latin teacher, the Latin teacher could have 31 students if every student wants to take Latin. We do reach a tipping point at some point in time, and this is not a budget hearing or a budget meeting to talk about what we need, but certainly, there are some classes that educationally we would like to see smaller. On the other hand, I don't want to deny a student an opportunity to take a class if they're a junior or a senior and they want to take Latin or AP Physics or some other course. We don't have an official cap.
Okay, great. On page 16, there is a typo.
Sure thing.
The Integrated Business Applications 1, the credit should be .5. There's no decimal point before the 5.
Thank you.
Okay, and one, another typo on page 22.
Sure thing.
Reading/Writing Workshop 2 in the spring. The level you have is U. Maybe you want to write the entire word out. I'm not sure if that's intentional or not. And also, the font is off on credit, .5 semester course.
Thank you.
That's the teacher in me, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Okay. You also mentioned about how students can move up and down in the different courses. You do have summer reading for English and History. Are there any other courses that they are, that they require summer reading? And the reason why I'm asking is, would you ever consider having a book that would cover two different departments for summer reading?
Summer reading is an interesting concept, because it's really difficult to enforce, and so what we try to do is encourage. For instance, if a student is taking an advanced placement course, the more work they can do during the summer in preparation for that course, the better they'll do. But you can't physically make the student do summer work. We do produce all sorts of summer reading lists for English and History, and again, the hope is the students will do it for the love of reading and for the love of knowledge. Not every student does it. In an area like math, while we don't require summer reading, we offer students the opportunity to take what we call bridge courses, so students could potentially jump a year of math by coming to our six-week math program at Malden High School. So we have many students who want to go from Algebra II to Calculus, but they don't have enough time in their school career to do that, so they end up coming to summer bridge program in math. They do the entire six-week math curriculum. They do it in six weeks, an entire year, and if they pass the final exam with an 80 or a better, we give them the credit and we allow them to go to the next level course. So we do that in math. We have summer reading in English and History, and we also last year ran some bootcamps for students that needed remediation in some subjects. So it's difficult. We're encouraging students. I, to be honest with you, I don't micromanage the reading lists. Those typically come from the director of English, Margaret Adams plays a big role in developing those lists for our ELL students. Judy Allen, Jane Skelton, developed those for our high school students. I know what's on it, but I don't play a big role in letting them know what should be on it.
I promise, two more questions. I did my homework, I did read through this. The, and pre-engineering.
Sure.
Are there any prerequisites for it? Are there any courses, do they need to be proficient in calculus in order, or higher math in order to take these engineering courses?
Not the, not the pre-engineering course. The pre-engineering course and the exploring engineering courses are just exactly what they sound like. We're hoping that students coming into the ninth and 10th grade will sign up for these courses and really catch the engineering bug, if you will. Pre-engineering started this year. This is our first year teaching this. So we have all the equipment, we have a new instructor, we've had people trained. Ultimately, what we would like to see is a four-year program. So students coming in as freshmen would be in pre-engineering. Second semester, they would be in exploring engineering. By the time they got to senior year, they would be in Level 4 Engineering. We don't even have that curriculum built yet because we're in year one, and we need to see where the numbers go, we need to see if it's worth getting there. So far this year, the initial take on the class is excellent. I know some of you have been through the room. It's an exciting room with all sorts of equipment. It's computer-based, it's hands-on, there's pneumatics, mechanics, there's all sorts of tools, there's robotic arms, the kids are designing how to pick up things, move things around, and they're doing it with computer simulations, so it's really, it's good stuff to keep kids engaged who don't necessarily do well on, you know, paper and pen in some other class. So we're excited about the prospects, but I think really we have to look in three or four years and see where we are and see if this is a bona fide pre-engineering slash engineering program.
And one more question.
Sure.
The virtual high school.
Yep.
How successful is that? What percentage of the students actually enroll in that? What are your feelings about it?
Virtual High School is actually a brand name, so we belong to VHS, and we have 25 seats per seats per semester for Malden High students. And we, there's a fee to pay for those seats. And in exchange, we also supply a teacher who teaches a virtual course. But we get 50 seats a year in virtual courses. We also purchased something called Play-Doh, which is an online programming company. I think there are places for all of these programs. I think for as long as I'm the principal, we're going to need walls and classrooms and chairs and desks where 80 to 85% of our students are going to come every day, study, and move on. There's another percentage of students, and let's say the number was only 10% at Malden High School, that's 185 students. So even if the number was only 10%, they don't like coming to school Monday through Friday, 7:30 to 2:15. We're trying to engage them in coming to school. We do it virtually, we do it through Play-Doh, we do it through Bunker Hill evening courses. We've brought back a lot of kids from the dropout roles because we're offering them something that's not sitting in a classroom, six periods a day, all day, every day. That works for the majority of kids, probably 90%. It doesn't work for 10%, but at Malden High, that's 185 students. So we need to continue to look at these programs. The other reality is, I had one daughter who went through college and grad school and never took an online course in about eight years of college education. Her younger sister, three years younger, did half of her bachelor's and about half of her master's online. In a three-year difference, the world had changed dramatically at both the high school, I mean, at the bachelor's level and at the master's level. So we need to make sure students are prepared for that world.
Well, thank you very much. I promise they were easy questions.
That's okay.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Doucette. Mr. Iavino.
Dana, thank you very much for being here and for the work that you and your committee have put into this program of studies. It's very thorough. My question, and you touched on it very briefly, how much of a percentage increase this year over last year have your advanced placement courses seen? Or has the number remained static?
I think from last year to this year, the number was a small number. It wasn't, you know, maybe last year we had 380 total students taking AP classes and maybe this year it's 385. It's not a dramatic difference. What we've seen, the difference is in the number of AP classes each of those students take. So for instance, the AP exams start in the first week of May. And Malden High School ordered almost 800 AP exams for the school. So, and that ranges from a lot of students taking one AP class to maybe six to 10 students who take anywhere from four to six AP exams. So. And just on that note, there's a young girl who graduated last year from Malden High School, Samantha Sagisi. And while she was at Malden High School, she took eight AP courses over her junior and senior year. And I'll embarrass her a little bit. She got a 3, 4, or 5 on, I believe, seven of those eight exams. And when she went to Northeastern University, she found out that those seven AP exams of 3, 4, or 5 had bought her one year of college at Northeastern, valued at around $50,000. So there is, for some students, a payout when they get to the next level.
Well, I thank you very much. But the, you know, the curriculum that has been in place at Malden High School and continues to be in place apparently is doing the job. And unless my information is incorrect, I believe that college seniors have experienced acceptance at all of the Ivy League colleges. Is that correct?
Almost. Right now, what I'd like to tell people is, right now, we have a recent Malden High graduate at every Ivy League school. This year, the acceptances have come in the last week or two. First one in my memory, we had a student get wine and dine, not wine, but soda and cheese over at Oxford University and got accepted. First time in, I think, in Malden history that a Malden High student was accepted at Oxford. He's debating Oxford and some others. We had three students accepted to Brown. We've had a student accepted to Yale. These are all different students. This isn't the same student getting into all of these places. And we've had, you know, full complement of students accepted to BC, BU, all the UMass campuses, Northeastern. It's really a pretty good class. And the financial aid packages have reflected that. We have a student being offered $55,000 to go to Brandeis each year for four years. We have Posse Scholar winners who are going to go to school for free. Three students going to Colby-Sawyer on the Presidential Scholarship, four years for free. So, you know, my message about Malden High School is always, it's there if you come and attack it and get it. If you sit by and wait, it may not be there for you. But if you come there and really want to make your life into something and go after something, we're as good as any school in the area in terms of what we offer and in terms of the outstanding faculty and staff we have. We have some tremendous teachers who are being asked across the state right now to help with the Common Core standards, help write history curriculum, math curriculum, all over the state because they do good work. And they do good work with our students.
Well, you're absolutely correct. It's a pleasure to be here to hear you. And it's a credit to the high school, the wonderful staff that you have, and the excellent leadership that you portray. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Iavino. Other questions of the members? Mr. Winslow.
Dana, you mentioned the medical assisting program, but I didn't see that in the program of studies. Is that going to happen next year or are you thinking the following school year? Thanks.
We didn't put it in for a reason. We met, we've had to jump through more hoops than I thought we would have to with Medical Professional Institute. And not all of it is on their end. We had to have the room inspected, which I didn't know. The fire department had to come over and inspect the room. Medical Professional Institute is approved by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education as a proprietary school for medical assisting, CNAs. So they get certified through the Department of Ed. The moment they said they were going to use Malden High School as a satellite site, that kicked in a whole series of applications and letters and, you know, they need our staff list and they need our floor plan and fire inspections. So that's really dragged this on for a while. The plan is, in the month of May and June, to invite five or six Malden High School students along with five or six MPI students to a class that'll meet two days a week from 4:00 to 9:00. At the end of those, for 10 weeks, at the end of those 10 weeks, there'll be roughly 40 hours in a nursing home, in a hospital, in some type of care facility as an internship. And then at the end of that, the students will receive a certificate to be CNAs and they'll be able to go out and work. They'll also be able to sit for the state license. So we're doing that this May and June, real small pilot. If it works, we have a commitment from MPI for them to come back in the fall, open it up a little bit bigger to more students, more days, more nights. But we're being cautious. Now that we're in place and ready to go, the room is ready. MPI sent over all sorts of folks to set up all the equipment. The room is ready. They have staff ready to go. But we really only want to try it with a handful of students to see if it's successful before we put it into the program of studies and announce it as a major course offering. We didn't want 80 kids to sign up and then not be able to offer it in September.
I appreciate all the hard work on that. And I know that was a program that there was a lot of interest from the students. So it's great to hear that that's starting out on a pilot pace. I fully understand you want to take it one teeny step at a time to make sure that works. But fantastic news. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Winslow. Any other questions from the members? Mr. Welldie, for a second time? We'll have to put those rules in place soon, Mr. Winslow.
Just a quick follow-up from one of Mr. Iavino's questions about the AP classes. And I would be remiss if I didn't ask, because clearly, we can put a dollar value on the benefit of taking these classes once they get to college. But I can't help but think about the social-emotional piece as well. Do we cap the limit that our students are able to take per year of AP courses? Like, can they theoretically take seven or eight AP classes per year?
Theoretically, they could. It takes a special student. Typically, the student who attempts it or wants to attempt it is not somebody who's also trying to play two sports or in the band or volunteering at Bread of Life. There's somebody who has come in and their sole focus is to take five AP courses their senior year and go to college. We spend a lot of time counseling students around the benefits of doing other things other than studying, as crazy as that sounds. We want students to be more well-rounded. So this year, I think the number is less than five students who are taking four or more AP.
That's better. But we don't, as a school, cap the number.
We don't cap.
Do you think we should?
I don't believe we should because every year, you have that really special two or three kids. And quite honestly, I'm not afraid to admit, much brighter than I am, much smarter than I am, who can take five AP courses, score fours and fives on all of them, and leave high school on a good path. That's not the recommended path, clearly.
Clearly, you don't, but that's good. So clearly, you don't think that it's a large enough number to have to actually look at that?
No.
I mean, it's a small enough, handleable, okay. That answers my question. Thank you, Mr. Brown.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Welldie. Now, we're going to swing left. Go, Mr. Froyo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dana, one question.
Yes, sir.
The woodshop and the auto shop, what do they have to do to receive a college prep status in a course?
That's a great question, Mr. Froyo. And I think that's something we're going to look at over the next couple of years. What we would like to see, and this is good for the Assistant Superintendent to hear as she's here on her sort of induction meeting, what we need to see in all of our courses is a balance. And we need to see, in those particular courses, more writing, more reading, even if it's a manual. I know that the state is talking about some of the new assessments that are going to happen down the road. It might not be a history text that the student is going to have to write about in the new assessment. It might be a driver's ed manual. Or it might be how to put something together. And students are going to have to be able to read that and analyze it, critique it. So in those particular courses, I think once NIASK is passed this year, next year, when we go back to content meetings, we can absolutely focus on more reading, more writing within those courses, even if it's manuals and even if it's keeping logs of what you did every week, how you put something together, how you took it apart. We need to see kids doing more of that because, as you know, even if you, today's industries, it doesn't matter what car place you go to, it doesn't matter what machine shop you go to, they sometimes have to go to that 400-page manual and look at page 83 on how something goes together. And we want our students to be able to do that. So I think we can head in that direction. I think it's going to take us a couple of years to get there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Froyo. Any other questions of the members? If I may, from the chair, compliments on a very impressive program of studies. And from experience, I know this does not happen in a vacuum. You certainly have proven that you are the person that is, you know, the bond of all this. So I want to compliment you at the outset. Actually, I've been told that people see you more at events than they do me. So that tells me you're really, you're everywhere.
It's a high compliment, Mr. Man.
I appreciate that. First, a couple of questions. Is this available online? Is this on Malden High School's website?
If approved.
Yep.
Tomorrow morning at 7:30, we'll take the draft off and we'll make sure it's available everywhere.
Okay.
So.
On page three, first paragraph, I noticed that this is months and a lot of work of administrative teachers, curriculum directors. Now, do you also include students on what's going to be offered for courses?
Not in a formal way, although I will have to tell you that students drive a lot of our decisions. Just like consumers, students vote with their hands, feet, however you want to measure it. If they're not signing up for particular courses, year after year, we have to sit back and ask ourselves, is this a dead course? Is this no longer valuable? Why are students not signing up for it? So business is one area in particular where we've made some changes over the years because students wanted something differently. And now we're offering something different. Webpage design and tech prep management courses. We, this year, for the first time, we're offering a hospitality and tourism course. That was generated a lot by student input.
Great.
Students telling us, this is what I'm going to do in the future. How come I don't have an opportunity at Malden High School? So there's no formal mechanism, but students certainly tell us how they feel through the meetings with guidance counselors, assistant principals.
Excellent. Okay. And then on page four, I was just asking the superintendent, do you list the school committee on this page or is that typically not the?
We can.
Okay.
I'll be honest with you, we struggled with this page because at the time, we didn't know the status of Ms. Kasabian. We didn't know if there was a new superintendent coming in. So with permission of the chair, what I'd like to do is go back and redo this entire page.
Great.
Add the school committee, you know, add the new assistant superintendent, keep Ms. Kasabian there until she leaves and move forward.
Excellent. Okay, great. And then page six, I know you've been pushing over the years, the notion of community service. Now, that's not a requirement, right? That's something that...
Correct.
Where do you stand with that?
We've gone around with this before. I know I've met with some of the school committee members. I'm not a proponent of forced community service.
Okay.
For a bunch of reasons. I think anecdotally around the state, when I talk to my colleagues, it becomes a paper chase.
Okay.
And in many instances, it becomes, you know, the last week of May, first week of June, seniors trying to cram in 80 hours of community service to graduate. And so that sort of defeats the whole reason why you would go into community service.
Okay.
I think Malden High School, long before I got there and long after I leave, there is something about the place that encourages community service. I know there are members on this panel that started that way at Malden High School, volunteering their time. It's all about giving back. And truly, there isn't an event in Malden that we're asked to participate in where kids don't just jump at the chance. I received a terrific phone message from City Councilor Doc Angelo, Councilor-at-Large Doc Angelo, who basically said, without our students there, the Rotary Road Race would not have taken place. We probably had 60 students there at all the mile markers, handing out water, T-shirts. And that happens. We have students who go to Bread of Life on a regular basis.
So you see, it's happening more than ever, from what I'm seeing, right?
I see Malden High School students literally all over the city, volunteering wherever they can, whenever they can. And I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't want to force somebody into doing something that they weren't comfortable doing or didn't do. Community service, to me, is something that you can encourage, you can fertilize. Community service, to me, is something that you can encourage, you can fertilize. But you have friends, and I have friends, Mr. Mayor, who don't volunteer their time outside of their jobs. We can't force them to do it. We can encourage them, but I don't think forcing students to do community service is the way to go. We do it in other ways, through the curriculum. History is a great example, Generation Citizen. It's a curriculum that we run through the schools, where students have to come up with projects, and so it's happening as part of their regular school day, rather than go get hours. The manpower and womanpower it would take to track down 1,800 students a year doing 10 or 15, 20 hours a year, I don't know how we would do that, honestly.
Okay.
Contacting, you know, outside vendors and, you know, correspondence with all the various agencies. I just don't see it happening. I'd rather see it happen the way it's happening now, which, again, I think Malden High students fare very well with community service.
All right, fair enough. I'll just end by saying, I too want to join the colleagues. Very impressed with the dearth of offerings. I think I saw Mandarin in here. I saw a course on personal finance, which is something that's being pushed now nationwide, so, you know, I'll just end by, however, again, very impressive program of studies. I just would ask the student representative, if you had a chance to look this over? Yeah, it'd be great. Love to hear it.
I'm one of the students who took geometry in my freshman year, and now I'm struggling in calculus, because I'm not math. Like, not going into a math field. I don't like math. Actually, A.T. Because there's no advanced math class for me in A.T. And you don't offer an honors class. Because like, I'm in honors level. I'm in honors level in math, but not A.T. calculus. And I can't get A.T. stats stuff on the lecture, so, four years of math. So I think cutting out calculus honors makes work a lot of kids who go into calculus A.T. where they're struggling. Like, I struggle on my calculus homework for so long, for like, kind of no reason, because I'm not going to do anything with it further from high school. Probably a stat in college. But that's all in progress.
All right, let's hear from the principal.
I think that's a good segue, Mallory, because there's actually something in the program of studies that I'm asking for your support on, and it certainly doesn't have to be voted on tonight, but I would ask for your consideration. The Massachusetts University System has gone to four years of high school math as an entrance requirement, starting with the class of 2015, I believe. So what I would like to do, starting with next year's freshman class, grandfathering in our sophomores, juniors, and seniors, but starting with next year's freshman class, require four years of high school math. That would allow us, in the senior year, to do exactly what Mallory is asking, is to offer an array... Pardon the pun. An array of courses senior year that weren't just AP Calculus or AP Statistics. So we do need to broaden our courses for seniors, senior year. But I think the impetus to do that will only occur if we add a fourth year of math as an actual graduation requirement. Many students already take four years of math, like Mallory. But I think by making it a requirement, we're going to help those students, A, if they're interested in going to Salem State University or UMass, Amherst, they won't be able to get into those places without a fourth year of high school math. So to not do it would be setting up a lot of our kids for a big shock in their junior year when we tell them, oh, you cannot apply to UMass Amherst, you didn't take enough math classes.
So are you asking us to approve that tonight?
Well, I... I am, but I'm not, and I'll tell you why, because the superintendent and I have had conversations about this. It has budget considerations.
Okay.
Right now, I think off the top of my head, we have something like 18 English teachers at Malden High School, because every kid takes four years of English. I think we only have 15 math teachers. It's a pretty... It's a discrepancy of either two or three. So to add a fourth year of math, starting next year, over time, we would need to add at least one math teacher to pick up that load of students over the next couple of years.
All right. Superintendent, what's your thoughts on that?
The four-year math requirement, I was familiar with that, listening to Principal Brown speak, to what he just flashes you back when I was a principal of a high school. It's a fine balance between what the budget allows, what the state is mandating, and what's right for kids, and not necessarily in that order. The four-year math requirement is a must-go-to. I think we're doing our kids a disadvantage in Malden if we don't. To be sitting on this side of the table now, I've been where Principal Brown is when a superintendent says, you can make that happen, but it has to happen at a cost within the rank somewhere else. I'm sure that Principal Brown and I will sit down and address that. We all recognize that we're also at a point where additional staff is a need, but not necessarily one that we can afford at this point. So I would look to Principal Brown to look back at his staff, look at those classes that perhaps are not drawing the numbers, condense, merge where we can, and basically begin the process of looking for that additional math teacher. So I have to admit, it is uncomfortable for me at this point to be on this side of the table. I always felt it was easy to be over there, looking at a superintendent, saying, come on, you're killing me. Give me another body. And now I'm sitting here as a superintendent, saying, let's look from within and see if we can make it happen.
But by ass approving the program of studies tonight doesn't box the committee in...
No, it doesn't box the committee, because the whole world comes down to budgetary constraints.
Okay. Any other questions? Any other questions? Any other questions? Mr. Welldie for a third time.
All right. Now, I kind of want to give Mallory some wings on this one, because, for me, hearing that, a more important issue to me than requiring the four years of mathematics seems to be to add more electives for mathematics. So it sounds like, from what Mallory describes, that we're really only teaching to the top. I mean, in a sense, we all know, especially at Malden High School with our student population, that any kid who wants to go to college is probably going to take that fourth year of mathematics. I was in a very similar situation. I remember it well. I also very much dislike mathematics. But I knew that if I was going to get into Tufts, and if I was going to go there, that I needed to take that fourth year of mathematics. Luckily for me, a CP Calculus course was offered back then, and I didn't even have to worry about honors-level calculus. But at the same time, if my only option was AP Calculus, I would have done it, and I would have suffered and hated every day of it, but I would have done it. And I think that it's a more pressing issue, rather than requiring the four years of mathematics, to make sure that those electives are offered. I think, you know, looking at this, the social sciences, the sciences, English, which already is required, but especially the sciences and social sciences, seem to do a really good job of offering those odd fourth years, just in cases, if you want to take that fourth year of this. But I think that's something that, at least as one member, I would look to you and say, we do need to have that fourth year requirement there. But our kids are doing it anyways. I think we need to have the options for them to take, so that would be my two cents on the issue. I do agree with Mallory on this.
So I forget the page, Mr. Welldie, but I think if you look at the math electives, there's a... There's a course, it's near the end of the math electives. AMDP, do you see that course at all?
Not yet, but I believe you...
Okay. I apologize. I don't know.
No, it's okay.
Pages 43 to 50?
Yeah, so if you look towards maybe 47 on, that should list some of the math electives. So what's page 48 say? No? Yeah?
Computer programming.
And then what's after that?
That is all. We've got peer tutoring in math, and then three sections of computer programming.
So before that is...
AP Calculus.
Yeah.
AB, AP Calculus BC, Advanced Mathematical Decision Making.
That's it. Advanced Mathematical Decision Making. We have a ton of seniors in that class. And that class was open to Ms. McDonald and others. So we... It's not that we don't get this problem. We do. And I certainly respect you saying, Mr. Welldie, we need more electives, but...
But the same budgetary implication.
It's the same budget. We could add those electives. What do we take away? What are kids not taking if we add the elective? So...
Poor Superintendent DeRouze.
It's a balance, right?
All right. Let me go to Superintendent DeRouze.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Again, I think, in fairness to a high school's course selection, students also make the decision based on whether it's an honors course for credit, whether it's a college prep course for credit. And students would tend to, not all, but some would gravitate towards honor programs, are the APs for the additional credits. Always a juggling act, Superintendent Brown, I mean, Principal Brown. And one that I can recognize, because that's... Just because you have the elective, it might not be the choice of the student
That's correct.
in the track that that student's on.
All right. Thank you, Superintendent. Student Representative, is that enough for you?
Yeah. I was just like, like, the honors is a big deal. If you take three years of honors now in a college, you can calm down, and you can be better than, oh, well, she doesn't care, she's slacking, and you have to... They say, like, at law school, like, admissions, and they say you want... They want to see kids go from CP honors, A.T., they don't want to see kids go from honors, CP. It's a bad decision.
Absolutely. You're a good advertisement for us, Mallory, so...
All right. Thank you.
And no one would ever accuse you of slacking, by the way.
All right. Mr. Winslow, second time?
To give encouragement to all the calculus students at the high school, I appreciated struggling at calculus in high schools, rather than having to do it in college. It was very critical in a tough engineering school to have, you know, a leg up on calculus, because everything else you do grows off of that. So struggle with it now, and you'll have the time to address it in college. So good luck to everybody.
So to your point, Mr. Mayor, if you vote on this program of studies tonight, in principle, the fourth year of math is added, and then it's up to the superintendent and me over the next couple of years to find out how we're going to make sure every student gets a fourth year of math before they graduate, beginning with next year's class, so...
Okay. All right, very good. Any other questions? Hearing none. We'll entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Welldie, seconded by Mr. Winslow. Any other discussion on the proposed program of studies?
With amendments. We have typos, and we have that school committee page to add.
Right. Everybody notes those amendments, so we'll add the school committee in, and we'll make those corrections that Mr. Dusette pointed out. Okay, clerk, we'll call the roll.
Mr. Brawl?
Yes.
Mr. Succi?
Yes.
Mr. DiMaria?
Yes.
Mr. Sett?
Yes.
Mr. Froyo?
Yes.
Mr. Avino?
Yes.
Mr. Welldie?
Yes.
Mr. Winslow?
Yes.
Any questions?
Yes. Okay, that motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Appreciate it.
All right, the next order of business. We're now back to the normal course of our agenda. We're now heading over to Superintendent's Reports, item one, accomplishments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My honor, there we go. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right, we're going to try to move right through this to bring our agenda up to pace. Ferryway School received a $10,000 grant from the DESE as accommodation school. As a result, the staff of the ferryway will be trained in learning walkthroughs to identify best practices in reaching their students. And we partnered with Chelsea, where a visiting Chelsea school, from the Chelsea Public Schools, will come in and look at the ferryway model. Again, the ferryway was recognized for closing the achievement gap, which was big for them. That's why they got the accommodation. And this grant will allow us, once again, as Principal Brown said, to begin to showcase some of the talents that we do have in this district. Moving right down, Salemwood. Now, this is an example of students in the district going beyond the everyday students. Salemwood had 85 students come in over February vacation for three days for MCAS ELA support. Now, those are students that... It was a vacation. They could have stayed home, but 85 students came to school. They were with teachers, and they were basically ramping up to prepare for their MCAS, which is, again, a commitment that the students see, but also to extend the fact that the schools need to stay open. I think as we start to go down the road of teen centers and additional programming, the city, the schools need to partner and just really use these schools as community centers, and keep them open, bring kids in, bring parents in. The schools are the anchors for the community. And 85 students, I bet if we had more teachers and more programs, we could have filled that building with over 100, 150 students over a vacation. Principal Brown started to talk about the list of Malden High School students being accepted to top colleges, as he said, Oxford, Cornell, Yale, Brown, and Duke so far this year. And last year, Malden High School has at least one student accepted in every Ivy League school, which is a tremendous acknowledgement of the good work. And again, this is really pre-K through 12. This is all the teachers, all the commitment that these people put into these students daily. On Wednesday, April 4th, Ward 7, school committee members, city councilors, students, and parents conducted a pilot walking school bus. Now, I know we're preparing for an entire city to do this on Walking School Bus Day, which is May 2nd, I believe. Is that the state, or is that the national? I look to my resident experts on the far end. It's the state.
Massachusetts Walk to School.
Very good. It's a...
I think I believe it's everywhere.
Everywhere?
Yeah.
So it's going to be a walk to school Earth Day, Massachusetts Day, and we're all going to try to do that on May 2nd. All right, an innovation school update was an exciting visit. We, at the Linden School, we had the CEO of Creative Learning Systems, which develops 21st-century STEM and media smart labs for schools. Now, the CEO addressed the... Later, after the meeting, with several school committee members and other dignitaries in the room, went off to address the entire district on the value of project-based learning. Now, project-based learning, I think, is something that's worth exploring, because it does talk to building partnerships. So students, teachers, go out into the community. They pick a project that will better the community. So it automatically engages the community aspect. And the idea of project-based learning is you roll all the skills into one. So the project has to have a writing component, has to have a math component, a science component, a social studies component, and you bring all the skills into one project. And it's a nice way to have students, as well as staff, expand learning beyond the classroom and develop partnerships. So I am a fan of the project-based learning movement. Later in that day, at the beginning, we also had a meeting with Marguerite Goncalves, our union president, which we've been spending a lot of time together at various events, which is always good, where the... We talked with Rich Bransfield to begin to discuss where the actual innovation project is. I think we're at a crossroad with this project. I left that meeting with Rich, and Marguerite and I would like to go back to the school and really just have a forum with the staff there about where they're at right now. Innovation schools can be a little bit scary for teachers, because it's the idea of this thing called autonomy, where you're going to really plan your own course within certain regulations and rules. You're protected by collective bargaining, but then again, you may have to adjust some of that in order to make it fit. So I will set something up after the April vacation with the staff at the Linden School to sit down with me, the union president, and just have an open and honest discussion. Flush out some of the fears, flush out some of the concerns. Again, I have to be an advocate for innovation schools. When you have charter schools popping up everywhere, you have virtual school districts that are trying to get established in this state, innovation is the way that we can compete and keep up. It shows that the public schools are willing to experiment, willing to try something different, that in the long run would be better for students. So we will set that meeting up with the Linden staff, and I hope they can be honest and open with the union and central office about this. The new educator evaluation tool, again, on Wednesday, the 4th, Marguerite and I presented an informational meeting for the entire district on the status of Malden's implementation of this tool. 220 colleagues attended, and this was after school, and I use colleagues because it was administrators, teachers, school committee members, and central office. And I was stopped by several teachers after this. They said this was almost like a landmark meeting, because they've never really had the opportunity to see a superintendent and a union president on the same stage, basically in unison and in partnership. And it was an informational meeting, and I think it went well. What we're trying to do right now is that... What we need to do is get our collective bargaining language lined up with the new evaluation tool. And our goal would be to put this for ratification before the teachers' union by the end of June. There is a collective... There is a collective bargaining team comprised of union board members and several administrators. I looked to Marguerite. Would you say easily we have over 25 hours already logged on this? And I want to thank the principals that are allowing these teachers out to meet on this. It's been a big plus. But the goal is to reach an agreement on this tool. I feel this is a valuable tool. I like this tool because for the first time in education, superintendents, principals, directors, and teachers are all evaluated through the same lens. And in this tool, we are all allowed to create our own SMART goals as long as they relate to district initiative, building initiative, and student performances. It allows for team goals. Another thing I am absolutely excited about because our teachers are already working in teams. So, a fourth grade curriculum team could come together, create a SMART goal for the entire team, and then one individual goal for each member of the team. It's a powerful tool to bring us all together. It's not something we should fear. I believe it's something we should embrace. Right now, we have this collective bargaining team. We have a consultant. All work is being paid through Race to the Top Fund, so it doesn't cost the district. And to help the administrators move through this evaluation for the next two years, there'll be professional development for all the evaluators in one model of evaluation which will support this tool, which is also very unique right now because you'll have all your evaluators using a common language and a common lens. So, I am very excited about this. The subcommittee for the superintendent evaluation is looking at this document with me, and I'm using it with my principals currently. Budget update. We are continuing our work on the budget Friday, March 30th. I had a very productive meeting with Mayor Christensen. We began the process of looking at the city's early numbers. And really, this is a funny year with a new superintendent and a new mayor because both of us agree in the idea of transparency in budget and zero-based budgeting. And when you look at that budget through that lens, you'll see spikes in the budget because you're just saying this is what it costs to run a district. So, for two new people taking on these leadership roles, it's an interesting time because we're both looking at the same goal, and we both recognize the constraints, and we're both working collaboratively to move through this. So, I want to thank him because he is absolutely challenging me. I thought I'd smile and get an easy walkthrough. He looked at me, he said, "Not so much, Superintendent DeRusi. You have some exercises and a learning curve." And I'm taking my time and I'm learning. So, I appreciate that. He just didn't give it to me easily. I think in the long run, he's going to do the right thing because he's a great mayor and a great guy, but we'll talk this through. We are working together with the subcommittee also to really start to pull the budget together. Subcommittee updates. We had several subcommittee meetings since our last school committee meeting. The technology subcommittee met for the first time for an update on the status of technology in the district. And I will say we have formed a new team with that, and we are making strides forward, which is a good sign. The policy and procedure, subcommittee has been busy working on next year's school calendar and several policies, one pertaining to the suspension of students and their ability to make up missed work at the middle school level. And as I said, the superintendent evaluation subcommittee, we've met, and they've asked me to put together performance goals for their review as they would relate to the new evaluation tool, which I have just about completed, and I promised I'd get them to those people over the April vacation. I have nothing new to report on contracts that the custo, I'm sorry, the cafeteria workers may be ratifying, which would be at the next meeting. And contract negotiations, nothing at this minute to report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you Superintendent DeRusi. Are there any questions of the superintendent? Ms. Cabral?
Hi, I just wanted to, you said you wanted to make sure that the buildings stayed open, and I agree with you, just sort of keep the school buildings, you know, community, and keep them open during the vacations. But I want to remind that currently, the state of the schools, they are in desperate need of looking at their cleanliness and the maintenance of the buildings after that fact. I agree wholeheartedly that that is something that should be looked at, and let's just not forget about that portion.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Cabral. Superintendent, would you like to...
Absolutely. If I could, the mayor has put together a buildings maintenance subcommittee to address such issues. City Councilman Greg Lucy has been leading the charge on that. I've had several meetings with Mr. Lucy, and I have one scheduled for this Wednesday at noon where I think they're about ready to make some recommendations. This was a problem that if you look on my entry plan, that was right out of the box, one of the things that flagged. I actually had a solution to how this could all work out, and I don't know where it's going to go, but I'm starting to sense a hybrid of some of what I saw happening versus what has been flushed out through the subcommittee. Also, again, Mayor Christensen asked me to help put together a three-year capital improvement plan, which I polled all the principals, building needs. He actually sent out Steve Melonson to do the same thing. We compared our notes and we were pretty accurate. So, right now, I have Steve and James Norton working with me on tightening up and actually formalizing a three-year plan to go in and rehab, spruce up, and bring these buildings up to what I would say code, meaning let's make them look like the schools that they should represent. Mayor Christensen has, I believe, secured, or is attempting to secure, a bond effort for this because this is an expensive proposition, and it'll be over three years. We've gotten to the point where we've had a person come in to basically scope out, to almost act as a site manager for the project, working with me and the schools. We're looking at most of this work as a second shift bid, meaning they come in at night because our schools are open for summer programs, the better part of the summer. So, we're looking at bidding, putting it out as actually evening work, more or less 3 to 11, a second shift bid. So, there are things afoot right now to bring this all together, and I believe the mayor will be able to speak to his findings at some point based on the subcommittee. So, we are tackling this head-on.
Okay, thank you Superintendent Mr. Winslow, and then we're going to go over to Mr. Ayavino.
Yeah, I had a more, a question of personal privilege, just in relation to reporting out from the subcommittees, is that appropriate now? Or, I didn't see it on the agenda. Typically, we would have, we had a few items that the policy subcommittee was going to report out on. Where should we do that?
Yeah, we'll take those up under deliberations. There's no objection.
All right, great.
Okay, Mr. Ayavino?
Mr. Chairman, on the committee that Council Lucy is involved in, speaking to the issue that Dr. DeRusi was just speaking to, should the school committee be represented by anybody on that committee?
They are.
They are?
Yep. I believe Mr. Welldie, and was there another member?
It's Mr. Lucy, Mr. Lucy, myself, Councilor Crowe, and constituent services representative.
Yeah, Councilor Crowe has also been serving, who, as you know, is a former school committee member. So, that's the status of the makeup of the committee.
Thank you.
And just to let the members know, Councilor Lucy has informed me that his report will be ready a week from tomorrow. So, there'll be a press conference up on the sixth floor a week from Tuesday. We haven't secured the time yet, but it'll be typically there around noon time. And Councilor Lucy is going to submit the report along with the proposed recommendations to move the school system forward. So, we'll keep you posted on that report. Are there any other questions for the superintendent on his report? Okay, hearing none. We're now going to move on to deliberations. First up will be Mr. Ayavino to update us on homeless transportation.
Well, it's more of a concern as opposed to an update, Mr. Chairman. On the 28th of March, Mrs. Dusset and I had the opportunity to attend a legislative briefing on Beacon Hill about the McKinney-Vento Act. Just very briefly, for those who are not familiar with it, it deals with the transportation, among the other things that it deals with, it deals with the transportation of homeless children. And it, the thrust of the act is to allow youngsters who are homeless, because of a variety of issues that they would face in their schooling, namely that they may be attending more than one school during the school year, to allow those youngsters to be transported, if they so choose, back to their school of origin. For example, if they were homeless out of a community that doesn't have temporary homeless shelters and they end up here in the city of Malden, we would transport that child, if they so desired, back to their school of origin. What has happened over the years is the cost of that homeless transportation has reached, I think, almost a tipping point. If we look at the figures here in the, let me just quote something from the Office of the State Auditor. She had her Division of Local Mandates do a report, and it's in that packet that every member of the committee has. And what she has discovered, what her office has discovered, that there are eight communities in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts whose yearly expense for homeless transportation exceeds $250,000. Malden has a distinction of being one of those eight communities, along with Boston, Worcester, Springfield, and other municipalities larger than we are. Our homeless trans, our number of homeless students in the city of Malden currently stands at 1.54% of our students. The cost of that transportation of those youngsters exceeds 20 to 25% of the total transportation budget. So, if the tipping point hasn't been reached at this point, it will soon. The legislator, two members of the legislature, Representatives Philiotis from Danvers and Representative Stanley from Lynn, have filed a petition with Speaker DeLeo, asking the speaker to appropriate an additional $11.3 million to reimburse cities and towns who are involved in homeless transportation, especially the ones whose expenses are greater, to help with the cost of reimbursing the transportation. Currently, the state of Massachusetts, as early as 2002, from 2002, has received in excess of $10 million to implement the McKinney-Vento Act. At present, they give nothing to any of the municipalities. We're footing the bill completely. As you know, we have a law on the books called Proposition 2 and 1/2 that prevents the local municipality from raising property taxes more than 2 and 1/2%. It also forbids the state, from when it was passed in 1981, to place additional unfunded mandates on local municipalities. I mean, I'm certainly not recommending that the city of Malden go forward and seek an injunction against the state. That's not my point. My point simply is, as I stated in my letter, that everybody has a copy of, that I wrote to our legislative delegation, Representatives Fallon, Donato, Senator Clark, and Representative Paul Brodeur, who has one precinct in Ward 5, to ask them to sign on to that petition so that Speaker DeLeo would see that it's not just 14, or 15, or even 50 members of the House, but a majority of the members of the House who are asking for relief of their local communities. Because currently, we're paying out, we're getting nothing back. Now, this is just, I'm just talking about the homeless aspect of transportation. Under special education, we have the circuit breaker funds that come back to us. It's not dollar for dollar, but it's something. So, that's what we're seeking. That was the thrust of my letter, and if the school committee so desires, they could, or if the chairman so desires, you might want to redo the letter and ask that the members of the committee sign it, however, that's your province. But just a couple of other statistics. Fiscal year 11, we spent $496,880 homeless transportation. The following fiscal year, 12, $425,000. The projection this year is close to a half a million dollars. The superintendent can speak to that much more accurately than I can, but it could exceed that. Am I not correct, Superintendent DeRusi?
Yes.
Okay. So, I think these are considerations that the school committee has to make. I've included in that packet from the Office of Local Mandates of Auditor Bump, Suzanne Bump's office, a listing of the communities, what they spent in fiscal year 11 and what the projections are, would be for fiscal year 12. So, if anybody wants to read it, the Malden section is on. Malden is listed on page, I think, eight or nine. This year, our actual figure, our actual figure according to the State Auditor is $407,509. Next year, the projection, according to Dr. DeRusi again, is lower. They have us at just under $400,000, but the superintendent thinks that that's a low figure. So, just for the information of the school committee, your information, you know, Malden has 212 homeless children, 212. We educate 102. 110 have decided to go back to their communities of origin. We're a school committee that touts what a wonderful or what an improving school district we have. I believe that. I think we all believe that. I would simply say that I don't know the value that a child derives being in a bus or in a cab for 35 or 40 minutes, or 25 minutes in the morning, and again, back in the afternoon, when we have a very good school system that could easily accommodate those youngsters. The theory, again, is that, you know, you send them back to their school of origin because it's temporary shelter. But temporary, I don't know if anybody read the article in the Globe a week ago, temporary could mean two years, three years. So, to have that go forward of that period of time, we then reach a tipping point and we say, gee, Principal Brown, you want to add another math teacher? Gee, we can't afford another math teacher. But the state mandates something that they're not paying us for, and we have to march in lockstep. And I think that's, I think it's wrong.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ayavino. Very poignant comments. Any questions for the representative from Ward 4, Maria, Ms. Dusset?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also attended the meeting with Mr. Ayavino, and the two of us were floored at the amount of money that is being spent on this issue. One of the comments that some of the speakers had made was instead of contributing money to this, to this situation, they should actually contribute the money to trying to find permanent homes for the people that are homeless. And it was just, it was, it's a sad situation, and it really needs to be looked into. And as Mr. Ayavino said, we, I think we have hit, reached the tipping point. It was truly eye-opening.
All right. Well, on behalf of the rest of the members, we want to say thank you for attending that hearing. I, myself as chair, met with Speaker DeLeo on Thursday afternoon with a few other mayors from the MAPC, which is the Metropolitan Area Planning Council. And that was one of my pitches, you know, representing the school committee, to ask about homeless transportation. No guarantees, but he definitely didn't flinch and acknowledged that he's aware of the issue. So, we have heard the House Committee on Ways and Means is releasing their version of the budget Wednesday morning, so we'll have an idea of whether or not they're going to do anything then. But until that time happens, compliments to, you know, the committee for staying on top of this important issue, so. Mr. Ayavino?
Yeah, it's, we're really impacted, the greater Boston area, your urban areas, where there are facilities to house people temporarily. Also, in places like Chicopee, Springfield, out in the western part of the state, where you might think, gee, that's not very heavily populated. Well, certain, there were certain pockets of population, especially near interstates, near the Mass Pike and other interstates that crisscrossed that area, and so there were housing facilities. We're not the only community that provides transportation, temporary shelter in a motel.
All right. All right, well, good job, everyone. Keep up the good work. We'll keep you posted on what happens from here. Other subcommittee updates. Mr. Winslow?
Yeah, in addition to the calendar, there was a couple other matters the policy committee wanted to move forward on. We have reviewed the policy of the Malden School Committee relating to the order of business and of conducting meetings, and we have received comments from several folks. So, we think this is ready to move forward for the committee to adopt. So, that would be our recommendation to adopt. It's in your packet. I don't know if folks have had a chance to read that. I know the mayor has reviewed it several times, and this reflects his comments. So, our recommendation would be to move forward and pass this as our order of business for conducting meetings, so.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen. So, Mr. Winslow has brought up the... Ladies and gentlemen, so Mr. Winslow has brought up the topic of the rules that will guide the school committee moving forward. Are there any questions on the committee's work? Any questions? Okay, hearing none. Comment by Mr. Weldy.
Just a quick comment to applaud Mr. Winslow and the members of the Policy Committee, because this is a very comprehensive document, and it's something that we have needed for a long time, I think. And I would hope, and I think this is more directed at Superintendent DeRusi, I hope that if and when this is approved, we can get it up on the website as soon as possible, and potentially even, I guess this is more directed to the chairman, potentially even make these into similar booklets that the City Council has for the members and for people who are interested. But that's it. Thank you, Mr. Winslow. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Mr. Weldy, thank you. Are there any other topics, questions? Ms. Cabral.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just, I unfortunately did not receive this portion in my packet, so I am just going to go based on what my committee members are going on, if I could get a copy of this as soon as possible, so that I could review it.
Okay. Ms. Ronzio, will you email that to Ms. Cabral? All right, any other thoughts, comments, queries, qualms, suggestions? Okay, I would, from the chair, ask our clerk, if you can contact the City Council Clerk, Ms. Firmano, to get those converted into the miniature booklets pending the vote of the committee. All right, no other questions? We have a motion by Mr. Winslow, seconded by Mr. Froyo. Last chance for discussion, any other discussion? Chair has none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The ayes have it. The rules have been adopted. Thank you, Mr. Winslow, and to your colleagues on the committee. Mr. Winslow, another report.
The, at last meeting, the committee referred to the Policy Committee a question related to make up work after a suspension, and we do have a recommendation back on that particular issue. I can read that aloud? Right? The recommendation is that, that the Policy Committee recommends that the school committee amend the K-8 in high schools attendance policies as follows. A student, K through 12, who returns to school after being suspended for a period of time may make up the work that was missed under the following conditions. Any graded exam that was missed may be made up, but the student may not receive a grade higher than a score of 75. All missed work may be made up at the convenience of the teacher after school hours. If the student doesn't comply with these terms, then the work will not be made up, and the student will receive a zero. So that's the, that's our recommendation, based on the question.
All right. Well, if I could, from the chair, I, myself, did you, did this get emailed out or sent out for the members to see?
I guess it was, I guess it was in the notes from the policy meeting, but that, I don't believe that went to the whole committee. So we could put this on the agenda for next meeting?
I'd like that. Yeah, and if we could, can you get the, you know, the changes out? It sounds like you have it marked up. I'd be curious to see that.
Okay. All right. So we'll do that for the next meeting, then, so.
Any objections from the rest of the body? Okay, hearing none. Ms. Ronzio, we'll take that up at the next meeting, and if we can get the information out to the members ahead of time, that'd be great. Yep. All right. Any other business from Policy?
Just the school calendar, which is the next step.
Yeah, we'll get to that momentarily. Any other updates from any other committees? Okay, hearing none. We already went over the approval of the appointment of the Assistant Superintendent, so we have two items under consent agenda. Why don't we go, if there's no objection, let's take out of order the tobacco resolution. Mr. Winslow.
Yes, I was approached as head of the Policy Committee. A group of Malden High School students, working with the YWCA, is looking to get the support of the school committee and other policy leaders in the city in relation to expressing our support in terms of a resolution, kind of calling out tobacco companies to stop tactics that are trying to encourage youth to use tobacco products. These include such things as flavored tobacco candy that has the flavor of tobacco that, well, it's candy-flavored tobacco that dissolves in your mouth, other type of products that are, are getting our youth kind of hooked on the tobacco and nicotine, and then being sort of an entryway to cigarettes and that type of thing. So, you know, this is a particularly big issue in health. I mean, obviously, smoking is a very, you know, damaging thing in the long term, and, you know, there's been a lot of progress in communities across the state to ban smoking and youth access to smoking. This is just kind of a, the tobacco industry is adopting different tactics. So, so this is just a resolution. This is helping this youth group achieve their objectives, and also to help in support of some grants that they're working on. So I just asked the committee to support this resolution and support the work of these Malden High School students. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Winslow. Any questions of the representative from Ward Six? Okay, hearing none. So you have a motion to adopt this resolution, seconded by Ms. DiMaria. And just for the committee's edification, if we're to support this, then what do you do? Get a copy of this to the YWCA and?
Yeah, we'll work, I'll get it to Chris Murphy and the YWCA staff, so.
Okay, excellent. All right, any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed? The ayes have it. That resolution is adopted unanimously. Next order of business, the approval of the 2012, 2013 school calendar. And to speak on that will be Mr. Winslow.
Yeah, again, the Policy Committee, the 2012, 2013 calendar was referred to the Policy Subcommittee, and I do, there was a memo that was handed out. The, in your packets that were distributed last week, there is what's called the Calendar B. The committee looked at two versions of a calendar, one called Calendar A, and one which is Calendar B. We're recommending that the school committee proceed to consider the Calendar B, along with a recommendation to add a couple of observational days that would support the basic concept. So I'll explain that a little bit. In developing this Calendar B, the Policy Subcommittee recommends the school committee take a new approach in seeking to accommodate significant religious and cultural holidays. The recommended calendar proposes that major religious and cultural holidays be designated as no test, no project days, but they would be school days. Staff would receive two observation days, paid days off, which staff can elect to observe major religious or cultural observances according to their own beliefs. So the basic concept here is that we empower our staff in to make at their own election which major religious or cultural observances they would take off, and coupled with our policy allowing students to take off excused absences for observances, we feel we're respecting religious observances without sort of mandating any particular, or favoring any particular religious philosophy there. So, so that's, that's the key component. As I say, that the new calendar proposes these observations days so that people, in order to respect everyone's religious and cultural traditions, by designing a calendar with flexibility for students and staff to honor their own religious and cultural holidays in accordance with their own beliefs, rather than necessarily working or deciding on a particular belief as a committee. The traditional school calendar, right now, recognizes major Christian and Jewish holidays, and that really needs to be adapted to reflect changes in the cultural and religious practices in Malden today. Over the past several decades, Malden has seen many more families of Asian descent and many more families who practice Islamic faith move in. So I think there's an expectation with our new residents that our calendar reflect the needs of the community that way. We did, in looking at Calendar A, you know, one choice would have been to add more religious holidays to our traditional school calendar. I think that the dilemma we saw, especially this coming year, is that that really would push the school year out almost to the last week of June, creating the possibility, if we had a very snowy winter, we would be, you know, right up against the June 30th deadline. So, and that's the dilemma. If you add as many as three extra school religious holidays, you just really extend the school year. So the thought was, this is a way to respect religious observation and allow people the flexibility to do that without stretching out the school calendar too long. So, so major religious holidays, such as Rosh Hashanah, Yom Kippur, Eid Al Hadad, Chinese New Year, and Good Friday would be no test and no project days. I do note that Eid Al Hadad, it would be a recognition of that significant Islamic holiday, which is a change. In terms of the observation days, just to note, we did, several years back, changed the student attendance policy, and that acknowledges that students may take religious and cultural observation days as excused absences. So students already may take off days for religious and cultural observances. I also note that in 2010, we, in adopting the calendar back then, we worked, and the superintendent worked with the staff, and that allowed teaching staff, who normally would have had to pay for a substitute to take a second day, personal day, they were allowed to take a second personal day without having to pay for the substitute teacher. So that will still stand in place. These new observation days, the recommendation to make this calendar work would be to add two observation days that every staff person would have, in addition to their true personal days. Those observation days would, my own recommendation would be that they would vary from personal days in a couple ways. Staff would be required to identify those observational days early in the school year. My recommendation would be September 1st, so that the administrators would have sufficient time to plan for substitutes, or make other necessary accommodations if a significant number of staff take off the same day. And then observational days would not be able to be split, so if you were taking off a half day or something, you couldn't divide that observational day off. You take it as a whole day. So this is, recommendation is, of course, because it involves personnel, is really, would be subject to negotiation with staff to include those observation days in the new contracts. I would also recommend that they would be, this calendar would be really as a one-year trial. We would see how these adoption, how many staff takes off, offers, observation days, see how well we accommodate those in terms of education, and really just as a, as a trial run. But I think it's, you know, the overall thought is, is that it's respecting the existing, as well as the new traditions that are coming to Malden schools, without imposing any one particular tradition on any group. So that's the basic recommendation, and we're, we're willing to, I guess, I turn it over to the whole committee for their thoughts and considerations, so.
All right. Well, first, from the chair, I want to compliment you on your effort, along with, I believe, Ms. DiMaria, who had done a lot of work in this area. This is something that I started back, and I think, the year 2000, so for you to be able to get to this point, I do want to, you know, say from the chair, great effort on what is always a difficult task. But it's one that I believe we must face. This community, in my opinion, has changed for the better. We are, as many of you know, now the second most diverse city in all of Massachusetts, and we need to start acting it. So this, to me, is a proposal in that direction, so. So great effort. Let's get to some of the questions. And just so we're clear here, for, I see our union president, I think what we've all agreed to do is, tonight, to propose this, but then spend the next several weeks, you know, in conversation with President Gonzalez and some of the other stakeholders in the school community, as well as potentially our religious leaders, you know, who have formed a group as well, that, you know, we can contact through Karen Hayes in my office to, you know, try and make sure we have a good dialogue on this before voting it. So I think that would be the game plan moving forward. I anticipate us actually taking this up at the May meeting. So with that being said, let's hear from some of the members. Also want to make sure we compliment Ms. DiMaria, Mr. Winslow, and the rest of the group for getting us the proposal ahead of time. I think you all received the actual calendar, as well as correspondence that, you know, connects to the calendar, so I want to say thanks for getting that out. So with that being said, let's hear from the membership. Any thoughts, suggestions? Ms. DiMaria?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This was a personal challenge for me, being on this committee, as Good Friday is something that I've always celebrated, and, but I encourage the community to embrace this and champion this change. I think this is a wonderful way to encourage choice for our teachers, and our students, and our families. Right now, 22.7 percent are of Asian nationality, and this would also include the Chinese New Year, which is something that would be great if they could take that off as well. So I do know change is difficult, but I do strongly suggest that we embrace this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. DiMaria. I know Mr. Kasucci and Ms. Dusset, you're also on that committee, so we want to recognize your efforts. Let's hear from Ms. Dusset.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I also worked on this policy with the committee, and Malden is such a diverse community, and this is a public school. We are here to serve the public and be sensitive to public needs. And to designate any one or two denomination as being the only holy day to observe on this cal-- in the school calendar would be a total injustice. It would be appropriate to embrace all cultures and be inclusive. I'm also a practicing Catholic, and I don't feel that we are going to be hurting anybody by doing this. Instead, we're encouraging more observation of different holy days. So I do support this wholeheartedly. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Dusset. Mr. Kasucci.
I too support this, and I think it's a long time coming. You know, Malden's been a very diverse community for a long time, and this will help everyone be able to celebrate their holidays from their denomination. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kasucci. Now, from the rest of the membership, any thoughts, queries? Mr. Weldy?
I just want to applaud the efforts of the Policy Committee. This was an issue that, throughout the campaign trail last year, you know, I, as a school committee member, was very excited to see how Mayor Christiansen, then candidate Christiansen, was excited about this issue as well. So every year, we seem to have this calendar debate, and every year, you know, I find myself staunchly defending Rosh Hashanah and Yom Kippur, while also acknowledging that there are other faiths and other groups of people who also are not represented. So this, it seems like a small switch, but it's a meaningful one. And it's one that reflects the changing population and the changing culture of our city. So I love this. I am definitely in favor of this, and I think that, you know, there, I'm sure that there are little details along the way to be worked out as to how this comes to play, but I think that this is a proposal that will please as many of our constituencies as possible. It satisfies the teachers and the staff, it satisfies the families, and hopefully, it will allow us to satisfy people to worship by choice. So I appreciate this, and I applaud the efforts of the committee and the leadership of Council, Mayor Christiansen.
Thank you, Mr. Weldy, very much. And Ms. Cabral.
I get two. Thank you, Mr. Man. I just, I too agree that this is a very diverse city, and we certainly need to recognize all faiths. Again, I did not get this portion of the material in my packet, so if I could get, so I'm reading this now. However, I did get the opportunity to speak with a member of the Subcommittee, who did bring me up to speed on this, and I was able to speak with at least the principal of the ferryway, and his concern, and I see it being addressed here, but a concern of his is, what happens when he has half his? happens when he has half his staff out for the day? How is he going to be able to have classes? You know, if you have the entire 7th grade, all those teachers want to take a day off, understand this is their religious holiday, how is that going to be handled? So I think there are definitely a lot of issues that need, or a lot of little things that need to be looked at and addressed along with Marguerite, and that's what I'd like to say.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Cabral. Any other comments? Mr. Iavino?
Just as, just as a postscript, this was on the table this evening when we got here. I did not get this in my packet, so it was one of, I mean, I don't think it was anything that, you know, was left out of anybody's packet. It was just here tonight, along with the letter that I had written and with the minutes that Marie Doucette was very kind and capable of doing when we went to that legislative hearing. So it was not that, I think, I don't think there were any omissions. It was just not in the packet until tonight. Thank you. That needed to be cleared up.
Fair enough, Mr. Iavino. Ms. Doucette.
Just to address Ms. Cabral's concern, as Mr. Winslow said, if the staff and the teachers designate which days they're going to take off as of September 1st, planning is the key issue. Once everything is planned out for the year, then combinations can be made to cover the classes.
All right, thank you, Ms. Doucette. Any other thoughts into Mr. Iavino's comments? That's why we're not voting on this until May, so we'll have plenty of time to debate this, and we want to make sure we have ample time to bring in President Gonzalez. And I would ask the Chair of the Policy Subcommittee to contact Karen Hayes in my office to see if we can link up with the Religious Roundtable that's formed in the city to vet the proposal. So with that being said, we'll take this under advisement right now, and everybody's clear, they should do their homework in anticipation of the May meeting. Okay, thank you once again to the Chair and the Subcommittee members. Any other Subcommittee updates, comments? When is the next Budget Subcommittee meeting? Mr. Welldie?
Do you got it? Mr. I, or you want to take it?
Mr. Iavino?
We are meeting 30th.
Dr. Druzy, correct me if I'm wrong, but we are meeting on April the 30th.
30th.
Oh, okay. With a meeting prior to that if we needed to.
Yes.
Okay, and the April 30th meeting is at what time?
That will be 6:00 PM in the Superintendent's office.
Okay. All right, any other questions?
Do you want to, yeah, the other Subcommittee? At this point, we didn't have a Subcommittee.
All right.
Just as general notices, there is a Technology and Student Services Subcommittee meeting on April 30th at 7:00 PM, along with, just as Mr. Iavino mentioned, the Budget Subcommittee meeting at 6:00 PM, an hour prior, both held in the Superintendent's office, the first floor of City Hall, as well as, I know that sometime between now and the May 7th meeting, the Policy Committee will hold a public forum on the calendar. All of those dates, we will send to the Mayor's office, so that way that they can be up on the City of Malden calendar, which I believe is right on the side of the website at cityofmalden.org. So hopefully, if you ever need to find Subcommittee dates, you can take a look there, and you'll see all of our meeting dates and Subcommittee meeting dates and forum dates right up on that calendar. But that's all we have for now, and I'm sure that more Subcommittees along the way will meet, and those will be posted up on the website.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Welldie. All right, we're now at the point of personal privilege. Any comments that people would like to make? Let's go left to right. We'll start with Mr. Kasucci.
I would like to, I would like to thank everyone for joining my walking school bus last Wednesday. It was, it was a very enlightening experience. The pilot walk was a great success, and I'd like to thank Neil Anderson, Peg Crowe, Steve Winslow, Debbie Di Maria, and Samantha Moria from Safe Roots to School. We had two groups leave from 275 Newland Street, and they walked to the Salemwood and the Ferryway. The theme of it was to make it easier for children to walk to school. Not only just walk with them, but help them get there and take a load off and try to make it easier for them to walk than to take a car. And I hope everyone's involved in May 2nd with our Walk to School Day, and I hope it goes just as well as our pilot walk. And I, once again, I'd like to thank you, Mayor, for being involved and taking a walk like the kids. Thank you.
All right, thank you, and thank you for your great effort. Well done. All right, other points of personal privilege? Mr. Iavino?
Just as a reminder to the citizens of Malden, that on the 21st of April, this Saturday, the 21st, the Malden Kiwanis Club does its annual one-day of community service. And this year, we are, along with our co-sponsor, Middlesex County Sheriff Peter Kattugian's office, we're sponsoring a prescription drug drop-off at the Malden City Yards on Commercial Street. That's going to be from 9:30 to 1:30 PM. So as people are doing their spring cleaning, I'm sure you're going to find in your medicine cabinet, as I have, prescription drugs that are expired, unused, patent medicines that have expired. That's a good time to come down and just get rid of them safely and effectively and keep them out of the wrong hands. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Iavino. To my right, Mr. Welldie?
Just two notes. One is to wish the Forestale 7th and 8th graders well as they go down to Washington DC over April vacation and represent Malden well, I'm sure. And the other is to wish everybody in the Malden Public Schools community a happy, healthy April vacation. Happy, healthy, and well-deserved April vacation.
All right, thank you, Mr. Welldie. Ms. Cabral.
Thank you. I only need one mic, thanks. I would just like to remind the parents of the Ferryway School that the kid, the Ferryway PTO is putting on a Scholastics Book Fair. It's buy one, get one free. Please check with your child to see what date their class is going down to get books. It's going on from April 9th through the 11th. Also, we will have that book fair open on April 11th from 6:00 to 8:00 PM during the Title I's Family Fun Night as well. Also, a reminder to parents that the report cards will be coming out Monday, the 23rd, so please check with your child. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Cabral. Mr. Winslow?
Yeah, I wanted to remind folks, April 28th, there's several events going on around Malden. The YMCA is having Healthy Kids Day. Great day to come out and usually they give out bicycle helmets. Bike to the Sea will be there, doing bike tune-ups and safety checks for kids. There'll also be a cleanup along the Northern Strand Trail as well, so it'll be a busy morning there. So I encourage people to come out for those educational and community opportunities. Thanks.
Thank you. I have just a couple of things. Thank you. BB School invited me to their Spelling Bee on March 29th. It was fabulous. Kevin Duffy was the facilitator, and it was a wonderful evening. March 12th, the Girl Skulls celebrated 100 years and met with Mayor at McDonald Stadium, and we had a friendship circle, and it was very spirited and wonderful. And also, Malden Reed has their culinary event, which is a soccer extravaganza, Sunday, April 29th, at 1:00 at Salemwood School. And we all should go home to see if Jim Mazzone won at the Voice. Thank you.
All right, fair enough. Thank you, Ms. Di Maria. Any other comments? Just two from the chair. One is Thursday night is the Blue and Gold Art Gallery debut. That'll be at 350 Main Street, beginning at 6:00 PM. Always looking forward to that. Students do a great, great job. And then also want to make sure everybody here is up to speed with respect to McDonald Stadium. Many of you joined us at the groundbreaking last Thursday, and so where we go from here is next week, they should actually physically get into the ground, and, you know, the anticipation is they'll be done mid-August. And it'll be a turf field, and the track will be redone, and I think we're doing some other cosmetic changes in and around the stadium. So we're looking forward, great anticipation for that project to be completed. Mr. Iavino?
Would the new scoreboard as well?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, it would. Yep. Okay, any other thoughts, queries, qualms, suggestions? Hearing none. Motion by Ms. Cabral to adjourn, seconded by Mr. Winslow. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody want to stay longer?
I love you.
The ayes have it. School committee is hereby adjourned.[1783.62]